For 2021, that would be a program that you would be starting in the fall or whenever you set your calendar to start. You have to have the contract certified and you have to have children enrolled in EFS Mod, meaning you have to have their certificate and assign them to a classroom in Mod. That's the only way we can make that advance payment. So if you only have two children enrolled, your advance payment is going to be 95% of those two children, a very small amount. If you have 10 classes and only enrolled two children, your advance pay is going to be very low. So we wanted to make sure that everyone remembered, to make sure, this is a very strange year for all of us, to make sure that you have the application approved, contract certified, and that you've enrolled those children in Mod. Okay? In order for us to get the reports out of Mod and the payments processed, we need to have you get those children enrolled by the 16th. That's two days from now, so it's a quick turnaround time. Please understand that if you enroll more children after that, we'll adjust your advance payment for the following month, but we have to have a cutoff date to make that payment for this month. Again, this is only related to those who are actually starting VPK in the fall and have identified that they want to be advanced pay. Okay?
Jennifer, we have a couple of questions.
Okay.
EOC certificate, if we submit our forms by July 6th, should we already receive our June payment?
No, we make payments for the previous year on the 21st or thereabouts of the following month. So we're trying to get all of that information in and then we have to go through a number of processes in Mod for us to make that payment. So the payment will go out around the 21st of the following month, but thank you for getting those in.
Okay. Where do I upload the certificates, under bulk upload or under documents?
I'm going to have to pass that to one of our EFS Mod folks.
And we have one more. This year, how many children are required to start the VPK program?
You do need four children to start after July 31st is my understanding. Right now, we haven't, over the summer, we were able to start with fewer students, but my understanding is that waiver will expire July 31st, and so you will need at least four children like the traditional rules require. If that changes, and things are changing all the time for us, if the state gives us a waiver, we will send that out electronically in Constant Contact to let you know, but right now, it does not appear that that has been extended to be able to start with fewer than four children. So you need four children enrolled to start a VPK class at this time for the fall.
This might be duplicated, but my last month was May, should I have received the end of the year payment already?
You should have received the certificate to fill that out, so that has to be filled out and then we'll do the final reconciliation. There's still a reconciliation that needs to take place.
Okay. We have a private center that said, what if Seminole County Public Schools start later than August 10th? Can I still start on August 10th?
Absolutely. That's a fantastic question. As private VPK providers, you have the authority and the right to set your calendar at any time that you want. I know a lot of people try to align with the public school, and you certainly are welcome to do that. I know they're having a board meeting tonight to talk a little bit more about what the schools will be doing this fall, the public school system, but as private providers, you have the ability to set your calendar. If you'd like to start a little bit later, you want to start in September and not August, you can do that. If you want to start August 10th, you absolutely can do that as well. And I know a lot of you are assessing your families and the parents that you're trying to reach to gauge their level of interest and confidence in sending their children to you. So all of you will have a different mix of needs and wants from your families and you have the ability to set your calendars as you see fit.
Okay. And where can I find the document for the end of the year certification?
All right, let's see. I have an email. So let me find my email so I can give it to you in a safe place. It was in the Seminole share file. It's listed in your share file and it's end of year report. And once you sign it, you can email it back to Lou DeShurnus on our team so that it doesn't have any confidential information other than the number of hours. So you can email that directly to her at ldeshurnus@seminalearlylearning.org. We sent that information out in a Constant Contact as well, so you should be able to find that in your library on Mod or on the share file as well.
Okay. Is virtual VPK still available?
Virtual VPK has never been authorized. We are not allowed to pay for virtual VPK. What we have been authorized to pay for is for absences or closures of the program. And what we have been notified is that that will end July 31st. Again, unless the governor and the Department of Education, the Education Commissioner extend their waivers, the waivers will expire on July 31st and we will no longer be paying for absences or closures. But virtual VPK has never been authorized. It's not in the state rules and guidelines at this time.
Can their calendar be changed after they submitted it?
Your calendar can be changed before the days occur. It's going to be very difficult to change your calendar after the fact. If we've already processed attendance for last month, EFS Mod does not allow that flexibility if we've already paid you for those dates. So we understand that some of you, we're seeing it pretty regularly, that some folks have a positive COVID, a teacher or a child in your classroom, and you need to close down for a week for cleaning sanitation. If that happens, let us know right away and you will have the ability to adjust your calendar so that you could give those hours back to the children in some other time, maybe over spring break, maybe add an extra half an hour to the day. We will work with you to adjust those calendars, but you have to tell us immediately so that we can work with you on it. If you tell us after the fact, it becomes almost insurmountable to try and fight with that EFS Mod system to get it adjusted and to change your calendar. But we know that those things might happen, and so we're going to do our best to support you in shifting your calendar if you need to do so.
This is for a VPK application that has yet to be approved. Will the July 16th deadline be extended for advance pay?
Yeah, the July 16th needs to be done. We've been working for quite some time to work on that, so please reach out to the person that you've been working on, working with to get that approved because we have to do a number of processes to be able to make the payment. If you get it in after that date and we're able to get it through, great. Otherwise, advance pay will be for the following month. We would give you an advance pay the next month and you could still start on that system. It just would not be by August 21st, or I'm sorry, July 21st for August.
Okay. Will we be able to adjust our start dates based on what Seminole County Public Schools decide?
Yeah, we understand that you may need to make adjustments and absolutely. We understand it's a challenge, but we do have the ability to change those calendars. Again, we need you to get it to us as quickly as possible so that we can make those changes in your profile and in your calendar before the VPK program starts.
Okay. And one more question. If we started later than August 10th, do we just send the new calendar or do we need to sign a new contract?
We would just amend the calendar, I believe, and I'm going to jump to some of my colleagues if anybody wants to jump in. If I miss anything, it's not my area of expertise, I'm sorry to say.
I'll answer it.
With Mod. Thank you, Lori.
They can change it, it does not require, because they can update their VPK application because actually their contract starts the day that it's signed. So it doesn't really have anything to do with their start date. And to go back about the other question that was answered that didn't get answered about the VPK certificates enrollment, you do bulk enrollment, we don't require at this time that they upload unless it's requested. The child certificates of eligibility, we view those during a VPK monitor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So they just have to keep them on file for monitoring purposes?
Yes, and make sure they're completely filled out and signed by both the provider and the child's parents too. That's one thing that doesn't happen, so that's all they have to do.
Okay, that's a good lesson learned. Thanks, Lori.
We had a few more questions come through, Jennifer. Do you want to continue and/or do you want to answer these first?
Go ahead and let's go through a couple more of them and then we'll move forward. We can always answer them in writing later on if we need to. What else do you have?
So we will get additional non-attendance VPK payments for June and July, question mark. We are not paid in advance, so we just received the recon non-attendance payment for May, I guess reconciliation, non-attendance payment for May.
That sounds like a very specific provider question, and I may have to reach out to that provider individually. You can call Lou DeShurnus and ask her what the status is. We were paying in May and June for absences and closures for VPK, but earlier in the year, you might have had absences that we did not pay for, that you are now eligible for, so that's what the reconciliation payment is about. It's making sure that we've paid for no more than 20% absences when the program was in regular mode and not in COVID mode. So that's that reconciliation piece. And if you have very specific questions about your reconciliation for the end of year report, you can always reach out to Lou or to myself directly. Okay?
All right. I have instructors who are undecided as to whether they will return, but they're already entered into the portal. Is it difficult to make changes to instructors or move children around on class rosters?
That's a good question. We must have a director in place. You must have a qualified director on day one of a VPK program to start. If you do not have a qualified director, you cannot start the program. As far as teachers, you can change teachers around. We have to validate their credentials. We have to make sure that they are qualified. Remember that you have the ability to sign up some qualified substitutes as well, so getting them authorized early in your process would be helpful because then we already know that they have the right credentials to take over a class if at any point you needed them to do so, because there is a process in that to go through that. So is it difficult? We all know EFS Mod is not simple to use. I know we all go through the same challenges in trying to use that, so there are some processes that are in place. I'm going to jump back and see if Lori has anything else to add on that. She's my go-to today.
Yes, and remember instructors also have to be, the lead instructor has to be approved by us. You can't start out with a sub. So let's say your instructor decides to not to come back and you do have a qualified sub, and it would be good to run it through with us to make sure that they are qualified. Then you could put that sub in as a lead, but you would have to list them as a lead. It's not really hard, you just have to go in and make changes and we can always give you guidance. If you call the person who's been helping you with your VPK application, we can always guide you and help you through making those changes. So we're always here to do that for you.
Thanks, Lori. We know that this year is a really strange year and we're trying to be as flexible as we can be to support you. We want you to get back to business as usual as much as we can. It's not really business as usual, who am I kidding? A new normal of serving children, but we know that there are a lot of unknowns that we're all dealing with, so we'll do the best that we can to support you in those transitions. Open lines of communication are really the way that we can be supportive of you with these unknowns as you're trying to get your program started.
This might be for Lori also. Our contract has been certified already, however, we are unable to enroll children in our VPK enrollment tab. Is there a step we are missing?
Usually if that happens, there are two things that are going on. Either during the VPK application process, we may have forgotten to verify because we're looking at so many things and the second reviewers, your classroom might not be verified, or sometimes what happens, if you go in and make changes and don't resubmit, then the classroom needs to be re-verified and you won't be able to see that. Also, if your VPK application status is rejected or incomplete, sometimes you won't be able to see it, or if a calendar has not been verified. Again, if you make any changes and then don't submit, we don't know that you've made changes and so we won't get that notification so we can go back in and verify. So it would just be a matter of going in and making sure those are verified and approved. And I see there was another one that came up. Can my assistant also be listed as a sub to take over for the lead if the lead is out? Your assistant can be a sub provided that they have a 40-hour certificate at the minimum. So we would have to have a DCF transcript uploaded into their supporting documents to show that they have the minimum to be a sub.
Thanks, Lori. So I know there are more questions, but let's go ahead and move forward and we'll see if we can catch more of them later on.
Okay.
So when we closed down and we had the stay-at-home order for COVID, a lot of you had asked if there were alternate options for VPK. It took quite some time for the Department of Education and the Office of Early Learning to let us know that they were going to allow a shortened summer option. That shortened summer option can be 200 hours, and there are a number of children that OEL has given us a report on that are qualified. They have not substantially completed the 19, 20 school year, so the child was enrolled less than 70%. They can re-enroll. It is a small list. If the families, we have to consult with those that OEL has deemed qualified. So if families are interested in re-enrolling or if you want that, we have a limited number of summer programs going on, but we wanted to make sure that you were all eligible and aware of this. We've sent this out a couple of times in Constant Contact, but just wanted to make sure that you had that information available. The same thing with specialized instructional services for children that need additional instruction or therapy and they have an IEP, they might qualify instead of going back to a traditional VPK, they could receive specialized instructional support. And we do assist a fair number of children each year with SIS VPK services as an alternative to a traditional VPK classroom. Right. VPK summer options? Okay, so we talked about that. Health and safety, we already covered it. Thanks. Mini grant status. Those of you that filled out your health and safety and infrastructure mini grants, thank you for your patience. We have learned a lot through this process. I am going to, you'll hear me say this ad nauseam today, when you fill out grants, please be detail oriented. It has taken us, and I'm saying us, it's our team of staff members, almost a month to go through all of the applications, get all of the errors fixed. The health and safety and infrastructure mini grants will be released by Friday to you. That was the, I think it was $2,000 total. The professional development mini grant, if you have yourself or your staff members that applied to take coursework that we could pay up to $750 depending on the coursework that they took, we need to get your certificates. Remember that all of the professional development had to be completed by June 30th. This was a very short timeframe, very quick window, but now that June 30th is over, we need the certificates of completion, we need the W9 from those staff members, and we also were suggesting direct deposit forms so that we could direct deposit funds right to them. We need to get those from your teachers by July 17th. If they proposed to take 10 classes and only got five done, by all means, please send that in. We want to release as much money as we are eligible to release. I don't know if the state will, at this point in time, they have not extended that professional development mini grant, but there's a possibility that in the future, there could be other opportunities, and we would like to release those professional development funds. If we get them by July 17th, we will then be able to release those funds on July 24th to all of those teachers and your staff directly. So I wanted to make sure that everyone submitted. We need all three pieces, certificates of completion, their W9, and the direct deposit forms. For those of you that are school readiness providers, you are aware that there is a new required curriculum list to be a school readiness provider. Because of COVID-19, the state, instead of making that required by July 1, obviously we're past that, the state gave us until September 30th, but our Board of Directors in the Early Learning Coalition in Seminole had authorized us to provide support to providers. Thank you very much for all of you who have submitted your mini grant requests to us. We will be releasing those funds also on July 17th. So wanted to make you aware of that, that those funds will be in your account. The next step after those funds are released, remember, is that you need to provide us with the receipt. That's just our validation back to the state and the federal government that those funds were spent on the curriculum as intended. So just wanted to make sure that you remember to get those receipts back to us within a couple of weeks after we release those funds. Registration fees and child assessment incentives. So these are two other funding streams on the school readiness side of the House. There are many of you that had elected to provide child assessments to receive a higher stipend for those children, and the state and the federal government has authorized us to pay for registration fees. We have been working, as has Office of Early Learning, for quite some time and we're still waiting on EFS modification corrections to be put in place. I wanted you to know that these are additional streams of funding that will be coming to you. I do not know yet what the date of release for those funds will be. Many of you were asked a registration fee questionnaire. You had to answer whether or not you had collected fees from parents and what that looked like. We're taking that information and then Office of Early Learning is using EFS Mod to help us to create a report so that we can release registration fees to you. Just wanted you to know that's in the works, it's coming, but I do not have a deadline for you yet. It's a little bit out of our control because it has to do with EFS modification and OEL's movement to get that done. They are working diligently on it, but we don't have a deadline yet. Looks like, do we have any questions, Colisa, that we need to jump on?
If we can go back to curriculum, we do have a question. I was looking at different sites to order items from. Does it have to be from the creative curriculum website?
I don't necessarily care where you make the purchase, but please be cautious that you get the right version. If you buy a used version and it's the older version and it's not on the approved list, it could be a problem. It has to be the correct version. So whatever vendors you use are okay, and if you want to talk with one of our team members that's a little more knowledgeable about that before you release the funds, please give us a call. We'd be happy to talk you through that piece. I just don't want you to spend the money and end up with the wrong version, which is in conflict with our contract requirement.
And where can they go to get that approved list?
It's on the OEL website, and we've also sent it out a number of times in Constant Contact.
Okay. And someone asked about funding for PPE/COVID-19 items. Is there funding for that?
Well, that's the health and safety grant that we are going to be releasing this Friday. So that was the mini grant that you could use those funds for that purpose, both health and safety and infrastructure. So the infrastructure could be for staff time, it could be for anything related to your business, so rent or mortgage or electric bills, extra janitorial services, and then health and safety, anything related to protecting your staff and children from COVID-19. So those two grants that are going to be released this week, that's what they're for.
Do we charge, this goes back to VPK, do we charge registration fees to only VPK kids?
The VPK registration fees are for school readiness programs. The school readiness federal requirement is that we reimburse twice during the time that we serve a child, so it could be from birth to 12. We can pay for registration fees twice during that timeframe. For VPK, it's your private business decision, but you can't charge for a VPK-only program. If children are in wraparound care, if they're receiving additional services from you, you can have a private business decision to decide to charge for that, but you cannot charge registration fees for VPK. VPK is intended to be a free program.
We're having a lot of health and safety questions, the health and safety mini grant. One person wanted to know if they can still apply for it and where is the info?
That information, that was actually closed. That grant is closed because we went back and forth for quite some time. We sent it out via Constant Contact, we had a webinar about that one, but that one is closed right now. Again, I anticipate, we're going to talk about another grant in just a little while, that you will have access to if you qualify, and then I anticipate that there may be additional opportunities in the future. Every time an opportunity for funds comes up, we will be reaching out to you and letting you know. But we have to have a closure date on some of these as we move forward. The health and safety, we're actually paying out of 2019, '20 funds, and now we're into the next fiscal year, so I can't accept any new applications for that one at this time.
Okay. And that took care of the other questions that dealt with those mini grants, because there are centers that aren't open yet, so we're good.
Okay. This is another school readiness-related program for those of you that have been receiving referred families that are first responders or essential healthcare workers that are federal funding at the state of Florida. They authorized us to serve some of those individuals with this CARES Act money. And this program started in April, it is now phasing out the end of July. So all of you that have school readiness, essential services, referred families, I want you to understand that we cannot take any new referrals. That's the big key thing. No new referrals after July 31st. So if you have a family that's on the fence about coming on board, we have to get the referral from them before July 31st and get those children enrolled. If they are currently being served, the families can continue to receive in three-month increments referrals from their employer. We know the COVID crisis is not over. First responders and essential healthcare workers are going to need to continue to provide that higher level of service in our community, and these funds have been, continue to be made available. We do not have the ability to reach out to every employer that your families work for. So we're looking to you to help us communicate through the families that receive those referrals to let them know that when their first 90 days is coming to a close, they can get from their employer another referral. So the referral form will stay on our website, but we cannot serve any new families after July 31st. Any questions about that?
I have one. Is there any information on program guidance 240.21? Is there any information on Program Guidance 240.21, COVID-19 Crisis, the Emergency Fund?
That's the grant we're going to talk about in a minute.
Okay.
Everybody?
Hold on.
Y'all are jumping ahead. Hold yours, folks. I'm getting there.
I hit that with a number. I'm sorry, Jennifer.
That's okay. Everybody's anxious. That's okay. Let's go ahead. If we don't have any questions about first responders, for those of you that were school readiness in 1819, we are still working on reconciliation, meaning we've either underpaid or overpaid because EFS mod was not working. We have until the end of July to get information out to those that we have underpaid and then those that were overpaid, meaning we have to reclaim money back, which we're not looking to do tomorrow, by the way. But we have to get data out to all of you to have, give you the ability to review the data that we've calculated. We took everyone's sign-in-and-out sheet, and we've calculated that. And we're going to give you the raw data to look over and make sure we didn't miss any children, we're not asking for money back that you really have earned. I would like to do a poll for you right now, just to find out, of those of you that actually were in school readiness during 1819, would you like to participate in an additional Zoom meeting so that I can show you what the data to review looks like?
Jennifer?
Not working?
It is not working. I'm going to ask Tanya to stop sharing her screen real quick and see if it will pop up.
Okay.
All right. Let me see if it will work now. No, it's not. Let me, if anyone else who has the co-hosting abilities, if they can share the poll. Oh, you know what? Let me, let me close this.
Wait. Wait, let me try it.
Okay.
Relaunch. Look at me. Can everybody see that?
I'm not seeing it, but that could be because I'm a host.
Oh, yeah. It's working.
Yay. Thank you.
I just wanted to gauge whether or not it would be valuable for you to do that. It looks like several of you have said yes. Certainly, those of you that are not interested or able to participate will do that. But we'll go ahead and try and schedule something so that you all know what the data will look like, and we'll move forward from there. I just wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity to kind of share that. Hey, the poll worked. I'll give you just a couple more seconds to answer yes or no for those of you that it pertains to, and then we'll end the polling. Thank you for your comments.
Look at the top.
I'm learning something new.
You'll be able to...
All right. I'm going to go ahead and...
Poll, too.
I'll go ahead and end polling now. And it looks like 83% are saying yes, about 17% no. So we're good. Thank you very much for that. All right.
Next.
So we'll go back to our agenda. And I just wanted you all to know that that was coming, so that you're aware. We are running into a tight timeline. We have one more survey that we wanted to do for you all. The Children's Campaign, the Children's Movement of Florida, I should say, has a campaign about using clear masks. They are not long-term, they're not reusable masks, and they cost about $3 apiece. But as you can see from the picture, they allow for children to see your face. They allow for them to see expression and language modeling. So we wanted to see, and just, it's another quick survey, to find out if your center would use clear masks. This is a purchase that we would have to take to our Board of Directors, so it's not going to be something that we would do tomorrow. But I'd like to know if your centers would find this valuable as a way to keep your teachers safe and still be able to give the visual input to the children to assist in developing strong, healthy brain connection. It's also a great learning tool for parents, too. If they see you with a clear mask, you get the opportunity to teach parents why that face-to-face connection with children is so important. So we'll do another quick poll. Let's see if I can do it.
So at the top, you should be able to click the down arrow button and hit Poll to...
I got it.
Yay.
I got it. So let's give it a shot. So just a question, this would be purchases that we would make, would you use them? Looks in general like everybody knows why faces are essential. That's the name of the campaign, by the way. And there will be some materials that come along with that also. Fantastic. Okay. So we will definitely take that to the Board of Directors for our authorization and use some of our quality and potentially CARES funds, whatever's available to us, to see if we can help with that purchase. Give you a couple more seconds to answer yes or no, and we'll end that polling. Thank you for your feedback. It really does help. We don't want to spend our time and energy on something that's not valuable for you, so we appreciate your feedback. Okay. We'll end that. All right. Let's move on. Let's see. So here it is. Everybody's been waiting. CARES Act. I know many of you have seen this communication. The reason that we're bringing this to you in a, I was going to say face-to-face, but in a Zoom meeting, pseudo-face-to-face, is so that we can make sure that you complete these applications accurately and get them into us in a timely manner. It's taken a lot of time for us to go back and forth because somebody doesn't check the box that's required, and we're not allowed to release these funds until we have complete and accurate applications on file. These are federal dollars that have passed through from the state. They are dollars that were allocated. The governor talked about it a few weeks ago in an announcement that he had CARES Act funding to help early childcare environments or early care and education environments. This is the rule that the Office of Early Learning and the Department of Ed have come up with. There are two phases. There are contracted and non-contracted providers that we are releasing these funds to and that have the ability. These are very limited. So first thing I want you to know is that not all of you will qualify. However, I have heard from the Office of Early Learning that they're considering a Phase 3 based on funds that are available. So first, we're going through this Phase 1 and 2. That's what we'll talk about today. And then we'll move into, potentially, they will come out with some Phase 3 that may capture some of you that will not qualify for these grants. So Phase 1, and you'll get all of this in writing as well, so just understand I'm going over it now, but you'll have it in writing, and we certainly want to support you in getting these completed. They are emergency childcare relief grants for providers. We use data, the Office of Early Learning uses data from DCF and EFS mod. And the amount that you qualify for is based on the capacity, your DCF license capacity. That was the most consistent data that they could use to determine how much money you would be eligible for. Contracted school readiness providers could also receive an additional bonus if you serve infants and toddlers, or if you have a special needs rate that's already in EFS mod, where you've identified that you're serving special needs children. So you would have an additional $2,000. As you can see off to the left-hand side, the capacity range, if you serve 0 to 12, I'm sorry, 1 to 12 children, you would be eligible for $2,250. If you also served infants and toddlers, for example, you would then be eligible for $4,250 in your application. This first Phase 1 is for providers that were open on April 30. It's that one date in time. So if your center was closed on that day and it was only closed on April 30 and May 1, you will not be eligible for this. And the application does ask for everyone to certify that you were open on that date. If they are closed permanently after April 30, they're not eligible for these funds. And I think all of you that are here are working, continuing to work with us, so I don't think that will be a problem. But certainly, if they've closed permanently, they're not eligible. Let's go to the next page. You have to meet the following criteria. And again, this is in the guidance that'll be sent out to you. It will be on our website tonight. Office of Early Learning has sent it. BACOM has sent it. Apple has sent it. I think FLECY has sent it. You have to meet each of the following criteria. You have to have been open as of April 30. You may have had intermittent closures, but that date was the date that you have to have been open. You have a current active school readiness or VPK contract as of April 30, 2020, and at least one child or with at least one coalition. So you're all, all of these grants are from your home coalition. So if you have a contract with Orange, Volusia, and Seminole, only the coalition where you reside, you will be eligible for these grants. They don't cross county areas. And then you need to complete the grant application. And we'll talk about the application in a second. But there's, every box that's required must be checked. If it asks for a date and you skip that line, it will be rejected. So I just want to make sure that everybody has a lot of attention to detail when you fill these out, because we have a very short window to approve these and release the funds. So let's go to the next page. These are for non-contracted providers. So if they did not, if you did not have a VPK or a school readiness contract, you have to have been open on April 30. You have to agree to complete something that all the contracted providers already do, a CCRNR profile. You can't have had any Class 1 DCF violations within the past 12 months. You can't have been terminated for cause from a contract with a coalition. You can't be on the USDA qualified list, disqualified list, excuse me. And you have to complete the grant application and Form W9. We already have those from all of our contracted providers. But wanted you to see, again, there's a lower amount for the base funding, but this is where the state and the federal government are looking to support childcare as a whole and not just contracted providers. So this is an opportunity for those not contracted with us. Go to the next slide, please. Phase 2. If you were closed for business and have a contract with us, but you were closed as of April 30. If you reopened or planning to reopen by August 1, have an active contract as of April 30, and you have to have a class composite score of 3.5 or higher or gold seal status. If you were an accredited provider, but you have not sent your accreditation to DCF to receive the gold seal status, you will not qualify. You have to have gold seal status or a class composite score of 3.5 or higher. Complete the grant application, and that grant application asks for a plan for expenditure. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. And reopen date or tentative date for reopening. So those pieces you have to have as well. The same, the amount of money that you're qualified for is based, again, on your license capacity. So you'll see if you serve 150 more or more children, if your license capacity is for 155 children, you would be eligible for $12,600. And then a bonus if you serve infant and toddlers or children with special needs, an additional $2,000. Go to the next slide.
Do you have a question about that bonus? What if you serve only toddlers, not infants? Are you still eligible for that $2,000 bonus?
Yes. Yes, you are. If you have a rate and have the ability to serve toddlers and advertise that you're serving toddlers, yes, you would be eligible. I see there's a question about, are we eligible if our contract was effective on 5/14 for the first time? You would actually be eligible for the non-contracted if your center was open on 4/30. You would be looking at the non-contracted bonus. Okay. All right. Let's go to... Okay. So that's non-contracted. Is this a new one? Okay. If you were closed, this is the eligibility criteria. So if you were closed for business on that one date, April 30, I think we went through this already. We got this piece. So let's go to the next slide. So this is the application. There are two separate applications. One has yellow highlights on it, and the other one has kind of blue-teal highlights. At the very top left-hand side, you'll see that this one is called Attachment 3. Attachment 3, and you can thank our team. We had struggles with the last mini-grants, putting in the 19 and 20 for the program year. These funds are being paid out of an allocation to the coalition for the 19-20 year. Again, we're looking at April 30 of 2020, so the program year is 19-20. You will see on here that it says you must select one. Either you were open, providing childcare, or you were closed on 4/30. I'm getting some feedback here. Can everybody hit mute? Thank you. If you were closed on 4/30, but you have a class score of 3.5 or higher or a gold seal designation, you would check B. Please put the legal name of the provider. By the way, these forms, you can type in all of them and save them and email them to us. So you don't need to print, and you can sign them electronically. Hopefully, we'll make it easier that you can open this up and type everything in and email it to us. The legal name, your authorized contact person. If it asks for phone and email address, please fill them both out. We had a lot of applications where folks just skipped over things, and they will be sent back to you or put to the bottom of the pile because we have a very short timeframe to do these. So we're asking for you to do them quickly. The line where it says EFS Profile ID, they are asking for your 2021 profile. That's how we're demonstrating that you're continuing to work with us. So your 2021 profile ID that's in EFS mod, that's what you will put on that line. Your profile ID changes every fiscal year. So every year you go in and change your profile, you get a new profile ID. We want the 2021 profile ID listed there. Then it asks if you meet the following eligibility criteria. Again, if you're currently a school readiness or VPK provider, you would check yes or no. The next line says, so if you check yes on the first line, then you would check yes or no as to whether or not you were open on April 30. The next three are only for closed providers. So if you were closed, it asks if you have a narrative and a budget, a plan date for reopening, and a gold seal accreditation or a class of score of 3.5 or higher. Everyone is required to fill out the reopening narrative. There's a small box there, folks. This is a quick, when are you reopening? What adjustments have you made? I've had some providers that have shared with me that they opened again, but nobody wanted to bring infants. So for the next 30 days, they're not serving infants until parents felt more confident. Or they've adjusted their hours so that they can do cleaning early in the morning and late in the day and keep those groups of nine to one separated, and they're not merging kids. Give us a basic overview of your reopening narrative. That's what we're looking for here. And then on the next page, is it going to ask you actually for a budget? If you are eligible for $12,500, do not give me a budget for $10,000, because we won't be able to release all the money. It's a very basic budget. It asks for operations, salaries and benefits, mortgage and rent, minor repairs, health and safety supplies, equipment, or whatever else you want to spend these dollars on. Just make sure it adds up to the amount of money you're qualified for so we can release it all to you. It doesn't have to be super detailed. They're very basic categories, but we have to have information in there or we will have to reject the application. The next section just says that you have to attest that what you are applying for and you're qualified for, that it's a true and accurate, this is federal fund, so you have to certify that you're applying based on true and accurate information. And then you can type in your name, the date, your phone and email. And your typed name is considered, in the state of Florida, it's considered the same as a manual signature, so we will accept it as such. These applications, once they're finished, it's two pages, need to be emailed to us at caresgrant@seminalearlylearning.org. Again, we'll send this out to you as well. And we need them by July 20. So if you qualify for this, please get these to us ASAP. It's a two-page document, but please be detail-oriented and fill the whole thing out, because otherwise we have to boot it back to you. I know a lot of you with our mini-grants and stuff, you were emailing everybody just to make sure we got them. We are only accepting them this time through this email address because we risk missing because we risk missing someone's if they don't come through this direction for us. And we want to give everybody everything that they're eligible for. So we will only be accepting them through the CARES Act application, caresgrant@seminalearlylearning.org. Okay? Let's go to the next slide. There's a different application that you'll find on our website. Please be cautious. The other application is for the non-contracted providers. That one, again, has like a teal or a blue highlight on it. It's Attachment Four. Certainly, if you know someone that owns a center in Seminole County that is not contracted with us, please pass this along. We have an email, I'm sorry, mailing letters that we're going to be mailing out snail mail to those folks today. But please make sure that if you're a contracted provider, you use Attachment Three and not Attachment Four, or again, we have to send it back out to you. I see, does a budget have to include the bonus funding? Yes. Yes. We want you to incorporate everything in your budget just to be cautious so that we have the authority to release everything for you. Everybody who's applying for these funds has to fill out a budget. More questions?
We had a question about the class composite score. They wanted to know what they do if they don't have it because they had not received their observation.
If you don't have a score of 3.5 or higher that's on the books, you would not qualify for these unless you were a gold seal at this time. These are the rules that Department of Ed and Office of Early Learning have put in place. As I mentioned, if you don't qualify this time around, we anticipate that there may be a Phase Three funding once these are processed. That Office of Early Learning is looking at an additional Phase Three that may capture more of you that don't qualify at this point.
Someone wanted to know if contracted provider means SR only or does it relate to VPK as well?
Either one, either a VPK or a school readiness contract or both.
Yes, that's right.
Your reopening plan, if you stayed open, you can simply state that in the reopening plan box that our center remained open throughout. That's fine. Just if you leave it blank, then it looks like we missed something. So just a statement that it's, you've remained open is all you need for that narrative.
Someone wanted to know where they can find their class composite score. That would be in, oh goodness, just escaped my mind.
That'd be in QPS, Quality Performance System.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a lot of acronyms right now going through my mind.
Yes, the QPS system has your class score there.
Someone else want to know where to find the score?
I see there was a question, if you opened on May 11th, how do you respond? Put the date that you did reopen. In that plan date for reopening, put the actual date you did reopen if that's already taken place. And again, in the narrative, you can simply state how you reopen. Full capacity, CDC guidelines, shortened hours, and anything that you changed to open in response to COVID-19. Or everything was the same.
Someone would like you to pass along that providers starting in mid-August are in need of funds as well. Enrollments are down due to COVID-19 and trying to keep our centers open is becoming more of a challenge each day.
I hear you loud and clear. We are, I am one of 30 ED's CEOs throughout the state of Florida and we have been communicating that with the Office of Early Learning. So yes, I will definitely continue to carry that message forward.
This is a what-if question. What if we closed between April 30th and August 1st, but we closed, say, on June 25th, planning to reopen second week of August? Would we still be available for the grant?
If, so you would be a closed center. You were closed on April 30th. If you're closed on that date, you would be looking at the closed center qualification. That would mean that you have a 3.5 class score or a gold seal designation. That would make you eligible. It's just that one date in time, that one April 30th that's used to determine whether you're open or closed for this round of grants.
Somebody wanted to know how to access the QPS system. They could contact Stephanie Miller or myself, Kalisa Astle. We can assist them.
Okay.
Can I add? I think that a lot of the questions about the QPS and class are coming from VPK-only providers. It only applies to school readiness providers. Other VPK-only providers do not get a class composite score.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Lori. Good, good point. I didn't think of that. That is a requirement to be a school readiness provider. There was some law that proposed it to become incorporated in VPK, but that hasn't passed this last year. So if you're a VPK-only provider, we would be looking at your gold seal status to whether or not you would be eligible at this time. We are going to send out an email blast right after this. We just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of heard the information. So we will send it out. Remember those, the email blast sometimes go to junk mail, so please make sure that you check junk mail. And all the attachments are buttons at the bottom of the email. So you'll be able to open up each one of the applications and the information that we're sharing today. And we're here to help. This is just a step in this direction. I know you've all been anxiously awaiting this. We appreciate your patience. Please let us know if there's any other ways that we can be helpful and we will continue to advocate as much as we can on your behalf to try and keep the funds coming to help you keep your businesses stable and doing the great things for kids that you do.
We have another question about new to school readiness, if they would have a score yet and no, they would not.
So they would only qualify if they're gold sealed.
Right.
And please feel free to reach out. For those of you that don't know my direct number, it's 407-960-2461. I talk to everybody every day and I'm happy to discuss these with you. I know that not everybody's going to qualify this round. I appreciate your patience. We will keep trying to help as much as we can. And if you have any other ideas on ways we can support you, please let us know.
And for those of you that signed in in the middle of the meeting, if you could just list your name and center that you're from so that we know who all attended today, please. And Jennifer, can you give your phone number one more time?
Sure, I'll even type it in here. I may be really crazy. Just know if you all call me at once, I can only talk to one of you at a time. I actually really appreciate having the dialogue with all of you that call and talk through things with me. It helps me learn what you're facing and helps me try and advocate on your behalf. So I really do appreciate it when you take the time to give me a call and tell me what's going on. So thank you. That's all I have, folks. Be safe. Call if we can do anything to help. And we look forward to getting those grant applications from you. Thanks.